This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cinco. Cuando se le pida, presione el 10. 844-841009 y el símbolo pound. All right, technical difficulties. Thank you for bearing with us, everyone. All right, thank you, Dr. Downey. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board by submitting comments by 12:00 PM on Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. Online via an electronic form as outlined in the public speakers portion of this agenda. Submissions will be read aloud during the board meeting by the board president or designee. Let's begin with the board roll call vote. Board Member Dr. Paolo Magalas will not be present this evening. Board Member Ryan A. Relis.
Hello.
Board Member Juan G. Álvarez.
Present.
Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Present.
Board President Mark Lopez, I am present. Item 1B, public speakers for closed session agenda items. There are no public speakers tonight. Item 2, adjournment to closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
Second. Álvarez.
Thank you. We'll go with a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Álvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes 4-0, adjourned to closed session.
Last night I slipped my mind in, answered the talks all round the town. Your cheek while I work all day, oh I kiss and feel it's finally gone. And I got so tired spending my nights alone, that I packed my bags and gone away. Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. I think it's gonna be alright, 'cause I met a little girl that night. She said you better just move on in. 'Cause I got my rent paid last week, and I'm out tonight. Don't you know that I did my best to be back by ten? Well I sure wanna hate to lose your loving, don't you know? When you said goodbye, it wouldn't seem right somehow, 'cause it felt so good. Oh I feel a little funny and good. Honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Don't you know, honey, I'd hate to lose you now. Trying to tell you that, honey, I'd hate to lose you now.
Good evening, welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District June 23 Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Mark Lopez. I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees.
Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: Llame al 530-675-6175. Cuando se le pida presione el 10-844-84100 y el símbolo punto. Item 3A, let's begin with the flag salute.
The allegiance to the God of the land and state of America and to the rich and prosperous nations of our nation. Thank you, Dr. Downing.
Thank you, Trusty Relis.
Thank you, Trusty Alvarez.
Aye.
Trusty Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Passes 4-0. Item 4, Special Order of Business. Item 4A is a school reopening update. Dr. Christopher Downing, our Superintendent, Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, will take the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed board members and Anaheim community. This evening, we will provide an update on our school reopening with the focus on the summer camp academies taking place at all of our 23 schools. I would like to take a moment, first of all, to recognize the efforts of Dr. Mary Grace, our Ed Services team, and all the amazing AESD staff members that are supporting our summer programs. And this evening, Dr. Grace, please take us through this overview and the great pictures that we have from our summer camp.
Thank you, Dr. Downing.
Okay. Good evening, Board President, board members and community. I am happy to be here tonight to talk about summer camp in Anaheim Elementary School District. So camp by the numbers, we have a total of 3,297 students attending from preschool through sixth grade, and the numbers are there. Our students are experiencing not only the literacy, numeracy, and art lessons, but we have our music teachers, and our students are receiving in-person weekly music lessons. And our librarians are out there providing access to our libraries and books. So in Anaheim Elementary School District, summer camp is more than just a camp. Here is the atmosphere.
Good evening, welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District June 23th Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Mark Lopez. I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cinco tres cero seis siete cinco seis uno siete cinco. Cuando se le pida presione el ten ocho cuatro cuatro ocho cuatro uno cero cero nueve y el símbolo pound. Item three A, let's begin with the flag salute. Thank you, Dr. Downing. Item three B, introductions and roll call. Dr. Paolo Macalas, board member, will not be present this evening. Ryan A. Relis, board member.
Present.
Juan G. Alvarez, board member.
Present, good evening.
Jackie Philbeck, board clerk.
Hello, everyone.
And I'm Mark Lopez, board president. We have Dr. Christopher Downing, superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. We have Deana Mellon.
Good evening.
Making your presence known, thank you, Dr. Grace. Deana Mellon, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jessie Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
And Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
Iris Camacho, Senior Administrative Assistant. Mary Madrigal and Alina Avilar Roque, interpreters. And Janice Cato, our Technology Support Technician. All right, item three C, a report of closed session actions taken, there are none. Item three D, the adoption of our agenda. Items eight B point one five and eight B point one six were removed at the request of administration prior to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relis.
Thank you, trustee Relis. Is there a second?
Second, Philack.
Seconded by trustee, or board clerk Philbeck. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item four, Special Order of Business. Item four A is a school reopening update. Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent. Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, will take the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed board members and Anaheim community. This evening, we will provide an update on our school reopening with the focus on the summer camp academies taking place at all of our 23 schools. I would like to take a moment, first of all, to recognize the efforts of Dr. Mary Grace, our Ed Services team, and all the amazing AESD staff members that are supporting our summer programs. And this evening, Dr. Grace, please take us through this overview and the great pictures that we have from our summer camp.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Okay.
Good evening, Board President, board members and community. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about summer camp in Anaheim Elementary School District. So camp by the numbers, we have a total of 3,297 students attending from preschool through sixth grade, and the numbers are there. Our students are experiencing not only the literacy, numeracy, and art lessons, but our, we have our music teachers, and our students are receiving in-person weekly music lessons. And our librarians are out there providing access to our libraries and books. So in Anaheim Elementary School District, summer camp is more than just a camp. Here is some, the atmosphere is amazing. This is a preschool class, and the teacher provided camping outfits for the students. They have little vests and hats, and then you can see how they have their individual workspaces, and they're engaged in hands-on activities. Here is a class over at Madison. They created their own little tents using their desks. And here's some of the literacy activities that they're experiencing with the scholastic lit camp materials that we brought in. There's some pictures of kids outside, they're outside reading. They are incorporating writing into the reading. And at most of our schools, they're doing, using flashlights, turning off the lights as if they're outdoors at camp. And there's a quote here from the teacher, "The curriculum is user-friendly and engaging for the students. Each lesson includes opportunities for students to interact and be creative. The opportunity to build community with students has been great." And that's from Ms. Martinez, a fifth grade teacher over at Ross. There's also the opportunity to integrate art within the lessons. So in, I believe this is a first or one-two class, they read the story, "The Dot," and then they had a corresponding art activity that went with it. And in math, our students are using their critical thinking skills, as well as their communication skills, and some technology to review their grade-level maths competencies. This was the most amazing. Our library media assistants, they've been providing services over the past 15 months virtually. Last week, they opened up their libraries for the first time for students, and we're not sure who was more excited, the students or the librarians, to interact and check out books. So on a small scale, we figured out how we can get books back into kids' hands and enjoy their time with their library media assistant friends. Also, music, we're able to, we're utilizing all of our instruments that aren't shared and/or require breath at this time. And it was really exciting because in the past years for the NAMM Make Music Day, we haven't had kids in school, but this year we did, so we actually could do some meaningful And again, here are some art activities. Our TOSA Laura Houston is providing lessons live during the day that they can join in and/or access them through streaming, and we were able to provide all of the materials to complete the art project to all of the schools. This is an example of an upper-grade sixth grade art, which is pretty amazing. The teacher utilized technology as well. There was a picture of them doing the art through the promethium panel in the classroom. And we also have our Coordinator of Nutrition, Nigel, is out providing some nutrition lessons to kids, so that's an added bonus. And another opportunity that we are providing, our Summer Well-Being Program. And it's a group of our counselors and school psychologists are meeting with students that have been referred for additional small-group opportunities and, you know, as we were calling the parents to let them know about the opportunity and gain their permission to participate. One of the parents, it was late on a Friday, and a parent said to one of our employees, "Why are you calling me to offer you this opportunity?" And he was like, "No, why are you calling me now to offer you this opportunity?" And he said, "You should be home. You're taking care of me and my kids, you should go home and take care of yourself." So it's kind of come to a full circle, all of the emotional and community support that we've had for our families, that they recognized it and appreciate it. So he was very appreciative and made that note to the staff member. So now we have the, we have this opportunity for our sixth graders to experience a week at Quest Camp. Remember, they were given the task that they woke up. The day they came into the class, all the adults are gone, so they had to put together, work together to create a system to operate. I was in one class where they actually could have voted to have a dictator, but they didn't. They had a collaborative form of government. So these are just some of the pictures that show how the kids were working together. One student comment was, "I think Quest was fun and cool, and I thought it was really interesting and way more fun than normal school." Another student said, "I think I benefited from playing Quest because it taught me to think critically and to collaborate with other people." And then one of our sixth grade teachers said that Quest is phenomenal. From what I've seen so far, it's everything our kids need right now because they are finally having discussions and interacting again. They love Quest, and I am having a blast watching them having fun. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Downing.
Thank you, Dr. Grace. And we just wanted to end tonight's presentation by providing everyone with an update on COVID-19 and some of the guidance. So we've shared at past board meetings that the CDC is responsible for providing recommendations. However, it is the responsibility of states, local health agencies, and counties to determine the safety protocols that will be in place. So in California, we have the California Department of Public Health, or CDPH, and Cal OSHA have now aligned the COVID-19 safety protocols within our state to CDC recommendations, with the exception of K through 12 education. That is because CDC is expected to update the K through 12 operational guidance for the 2021-22 school year. So as soon as that update takes place, and CDPH and Cal OSHA have aligned the California safety protocols, AESD will update our COVID-19 safety plan and identify for stakeholders the format of school for next year and the safety precautions that will be in place. I would say to our stakeholders, you have our ongoing commitment that we will prioritize the safety of all, and we look forward to sharing our updated safety plan, as well as what our classrooms will look like. The one thing we do know for sure is that we are returning to full in-person instruction next year. We have already determined that we have the facilities and space available based on the past guidance, so as the guidance becomes more relaxed, we certainly are expecting a school year, as we are beginning to say, more amazing than ever. So everyone, again, as soon as we have an update from the appropriate agencies, we will share that information with our stakeholders. And with that, everyone, we wanted to end tonight's update and just thank you, and we are open for any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Thank you, Dr. Grace. Any questions?
No questions, just very, it's awesome to see all this cool stuff taking place, and I'm just very excited for our students and all the amazing opportunities they have to just start getting back into the swing of things. So great job, Dr. Grace and your team, and just good stuff going on.
All right, thank you very much. This presentation will be posted on the district website, Board of Education page tomorrow. Item five, news and updates, five A, Parent Leadership Group Updates. There are no Parent Leadership Group Updates tonight. Item five B, Association Updates. There are also no Association Updates tonight. And item five C, our District News and Updates, Communications and Public Information. Our District News and Updates will be brought to us by Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, so hopefully you didn't go too far. Passing the baton back to Dr. Grace.
So tonight, we are proud to show you a virtual tour of Sunkist Elementary. We are in the works of having one put together for Roosevelt as well, but this is something that we will be debuting here tonight for you, the board members, and will be putting out on social media tomorrow. And we're working with the city to put, get it up on the public access channels. So without further ado, please enjoy.
Hi, welcome to Sunkist Elementary School. My name is Stephanie Schumate, and I'm the principal here. I'm so very thankful to invite you on this tour as we explore our state-of-the-art campus. Come on in and look around with us.
Welcome to Sunkist Elementary. My name is Steve Key with LPA Design Studios, and I'm here to give you a tour of the new Sunkist Elementary School campus. Right now, we're standing out in the front, where the administration immediately welcomes visitors and students. Right as you enter into the administration building, you see you are welcomed by a very bright space and safe, and this is where you would come in and check in your students and be your single point of entry for the campus. All right, now you are on campus, and as you enter and exit from the administration building, over on the left-hand side, we have our Research and Innovation Center. But right when you walk into the campus here, you have this beautiful courtyard surrounded by a lunch shelter, vibrant colors and excitement for the kids. All right, welcome to the center of the courtyard. Here, I'm currently standing in the area where the students will have some protected lunch eating areas. This area also doubles as an expansion of the multipurpose room with these large openings that open up and have a great indoor-outdoor connection. As you pan over this direction, we see some softscape to balance out the hardscape, as well as an outdoor stage that'll be really great for the students to be able to use during great weather that we have here in California. Right now, we're standing in the middle of Buildings C and D, where right here you see this nice outdoor learning area. Prior to this, it was just an asphalt drive. Now it's been re-envisioned with softscape, hardscape, places for kids to sit. Right now, we're standing in the brand-new Kinder Outdoor Play Area, significantly expanded from what it once was prior to the reconstruction. Brand-new play structures, new artificial turf with safe footing for the students. Right now, where I'm standing, I'm where the old Relo portable village used to be. Right now, it's being re-imaged into a brand-new play area for the students. Brand-new play structure with some exciting graphics on the ground that the kids can explore, as well as new handball courts, a shade structure, and brand-new basketball All right, so now we're going to walk in from the play court area into the area where we have the only two-story building on the campus, identified by this bright blue color that is clear for the students to know where the circulation is, balancing out the other classrooms here on the right. Okay, so right now, we're standing on the second-story balcony of Building B, and as you can see behind me, you really get a feeling for this nice, protected courtyard where the students are really going to spend their time. There is a good mix of large areas and small areas where students can congregate. All right, well, welcome to the second floor of Building B. As you can see here, we have a hallway on either side, we have classrooms that support the students, but we also have these new spaces that the students can take advantage of, where we have collabs, where students can come out from their classrooms, work in small groups, take advantage of writing surfaces out here. All right, welcome to one of our classroom spaces here, and as you can see, the students are nice and safely separated from each other for COVID, but still are able to utilize this amazing space, some bright colors, lots of space for writing and learning and pin-up space, and a good transparency between the interior and outside. Okay, so now we're in our multipurpose room, and as you can see, it's already being heavily utilized for the lighting and acoustic abilities in this space. There's some ability for this room to completely open up to the outside, and over here up on the stage, there's an operable wall that allows it to be a smaller space, or right behind that, it's a full-size room, which is another classroom for the students. All right, so we're in our new flexible band and choir space. You can see here, there's brand-new instrument storage for the students to utilize, as well as an ability to kind of spread out and have some practices in here. Okay, now we're standing in our other flexible room near the NPR. Inside this space, there's actually additional amenities such as sinks and the ability to have art in here, which is going to be one of the main focuses, but it's also can double when needed as additional space for choir or band as needed. Okay, now we're in the Resource and Innovation Center, and the space we're currently standing in will be used as a flexible space and could be a work area, could be an area where kids gather as a class, could be an area where computers go. And as you walk in, you start to see we have all of our mobile stacks, and all of the volumes for the students here, able to get a book either for reading at school or at home. And it opens up into a nice reading area where the students are really able to just kind of grab a book, have a fun time, and sit and enjoy reading.
Thanks for stopping by to learn all about our brand-new state-of-the-art facility. Special thanks to the committee members who have served on our different advisory boards who have made this project possible. We also want to give a special shout-out to our Anaheim Elementary School District School Board and our Superintendent, Dr. Christopher Downing, as well as the rest of the Anaheim Elementary School District staff and personnel who have made this project possible. See you soon.
So it's not too often that we have the two people who do the magic behind these videos, so big shout-out to Daryl Hutchison and Brian Brooks for their work. Daryl is on the spot whenever we need him, and he pulls things together that really represent the district in an amazing way, so thank you.
All right, thank you both, and thank you, Dr. Grace. Any questions, suggestions, compliments, board members?
I'll just say it's magnificent space. It's just amazing, and it's just, what a beautiful, beautiful site and school. So can't wait till we're, everybody's fully engaged and utilizing that, and the community is also enjoying it. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that school is breathtaking. Literally, I was there before all the bells and whistles got added, but once you see it finished, it's just so cool to see. So I'm just really proud of our district for being able to facilitate the construction of that site. Thank you.
And the thing that really impresses me the most with that whole site is the, just the vast amount of opportunities it has for teachers to be innovative, with walls being removed, walls that are there, you can write all over, top-of-the-art technology everywhere. It's, it's, it's exciting stuff, and, you know, our students deserve it, so this is great stuff.
All right, thank you again.
Could I add one thing? So board members, as we receive this revised guidance, staff is currently in the planning process for some resource fairs at both of our schools, as well as open houses that were requested. So we look forward to updating everyone as soon as possible in terms of when those will be scheduled for late summer.
And I think that's fantastic, Dr. Downing, especially for our community, to reach out to our community and let them know, since, you know, their tax dollars are being spent to fund this, so.
More information regarding this will be on our district website, along with the video tour.
That is correct.
All right, great, thank you very much. That takes us to item six, Public Speakers, Speakers on Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. There are no public comments submitted for tonight. Item seven, our Superintendent's Report and Public Hearings. Seven As are California School Dashboard 2020 to 21 LCFF Local Indicators Update. Rhonda Robertson, Director of the Department of Assessment, Translation, and Accountability. Mrs. Robertson, welcome.
Hi, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. We didn't get to present the local indicators last year. It was removed off of our plate, so it's a pleasure to share them with you tonight. So the local indicators are a routine part of our LCAP cycle that we report out to you It's a way that we can It's a way that we can hold ourselves accountable to the state priorities in support of our students in a way that we have a little bit more agency over because we get to choose and determine how we're going to conduct ourselves with regard to the local indicators. So we have state indicators that are pushed out publicly from the state on their state dashboard, and that's usually more hard data that's provided, student information that the state has access to. And then, the local indicators are the way that we hold ourselves accountable to providing the best holistic education for our students. And we provide that to the state after providing it to you and gathering stakeholder input. So in contrast to the state's indicators, where we receive a color and based on how we've done on each of the indicators, we measure the degree to which we are progressing. For local indicators, we meet the indicators if we do our due diligence and go through the process and really evaluate ourselves and gather stakeholder input. If we go through the process, we will meet our indicators regardless of what our actual results are within each of those indicators. So I'm happy to say that we're, by doing this, this is the final step in meeting our indicators for this school year. And so what we're reporting out on today are for the school year 2020, 2021. So kind of putting a cap on this school year as far as our local indicators go. So one of those is the conditions of basic learning, and that's really tied to the Williams requirements. And I'm happy to say, like in every other year that we've done this, 100% of our teachers throughout the district are appropriately assigned. 100% of our students have access to textbooks, and all of our schools received an overall facilities rating of either exemplary or good. So we're in great shape and don't have to make any modifications to that basic requirement. With regard to implementation of state standards, we need to constantly be looking at our implementation and how we can be improving that on behalf of our students. And we use a state-provided rubric to do that. And so what I'm going to show you is our results to our rubric that we used for this year, and this is the scale. So it goes from 1 to 5, 1 being the lowest, and 5 to the highest. So what we really want is full implementation and sustainability with regard to all of the standards. And there's different facets of the standards. So this particular rubric has to do with providing professional learning in these areas. And you can see where we rated ourselves, and this is exactly where we rated ourselves the last time we reported out to you. Because this is in the context of the school dismissal, et cetera, we actually had plans to be moving forward with our NGSS implementation and textbook adoption, as well as moving into implementing our latest history social studies adoption. But with everything else going on, with all the new learning occurring with our teachers and with our students, we thought it best to hold off on those two pieces, do background work here with stakeholders, but not hit the ground. So we are well-poised to move forward in those two areas for next school year. But as far as saying implementing, we weren't feeling like confident in moving the needle on that, so we stayed exactly where we were in those areas. You'll see similarly for moving forward with instructional materials, it's the same pattern, no change there. And identifying areas improvement for instructional delivery, we didn't move the needle on those two pieces, but we expect to moving forward next year. And then finally, this is kind of those other curricular areas, and you'll see there's one big green X, and that indicates an area where we did make a change. And that's in the area of world language, because now each of our school sites is minimally up to 2nd grade next year for our DLI program. So we're just growing and growing in that regard, and so our stakeholders told us, yeah, move that needle there for that one, but the rest stayed where they were. Okay. As far as identifying professional learning needs, we received a high rating on that one from our stakeholders because of the surveys that we put out and we get feedback on what professional learning needs our staff has. So that is exactly as it was before also. Okay, so that was standards implementation, and now, we're moving into parent and family engagement. And for measuring ourselves on how well we engage and seek input from our parents in decision-making processes, as well as promoting their participation, we use a similar rubric provided by the state. Okay, so it has the exact same scale as that standards implementation rubric, so it should look a little bit familiar. And in this one, you'll see more green Xs. Our parents really felt connected this year. They shared with us that they appreciated the increased and consistent communication patterns that we put in place this school year. So they really felt like they knew where to get information if they needed it. They felt like we were reaching out to them. So we actually moved up in that regard. Where you see those smaller blue Xs, those are not moved, but the one area that our parents did give us feedback that we need to perhaps improve upon is progressing and supporting families in understanding and exercising their rights with regards to advocating for their own students and all students. So this is one area where we're going to need to put a little more emphasis to make sure that we're doing our diligence there. Okay, and then on this section of the rubric, we improved in one area, and our parents felt that we're improving in our transparency and collaboration from district to schools to parents in seeking parents' input for building those parent engagement activities at the school sites. So the parents felt that they have more of a voice in helping determine what activities go on. Okay, so that was it for parent engagement, and now, we'll move into school climate. So all of these local indicators that are on the spokes of that wheel that support our whole child and our families and our community. School climate is one where we are required to use a survey in at least one grade level at least every other year. But what we do here in AESD is we check in on our students minimally 3rd through 6th grade every year. So we're doing a little more than what the state would require because we feel school climate is really critical. And the data that it's sharing with us is really giving us timely information, especially this school year. So we had a school climate goal that we shared with you guys in 1920, and that was to increase our student engagement from, gosh, I should have worn my glasses today, 56% to 59%. And so where we started was the 56, and then the year we didn't get to meet and share this out with you, we had jumped to 60, and now, we're at the 59. So our most recent results show school climate at 59. And the side on the right shows the actual questions that pertain to this area. So you can see what questions the students are being asked, whether more or fewer students responded favorably than in the year before. And there's some interesting trends. So the question that our students had the least amount of favorable response to was that 29%, and it's about when you're not at school, how often do you talk about the cool things going on at school? And our students didn't respond very favorably. So we think if school is really engaging, you're going to talk about it with your friends after school. And so that's an area of improvement for us, making school so much fun that they want to talk about it. All right, so our other, we had two goals with regard to school climate, and this one was with regard to emotional regulation. And we had wanted to go from 51% to 54% favorable, and you're going to see what happened is we've actually had a decline in that area. So we went from 51 to 49, and then we maintained that 49% this school year. And these questions are very telling. And you could see that close to 50% of our students, if not more, are struggling with emotional regulation. How often are they able to keep themselves calm in an area where other people's emotions are escalating? And we know that in our students' homes during distance learning, I know in our home, things were heightened, and our kids were hearing probably more adult conversations than they're used to hearing. And so having that emotional regulation is going to be critical moving forward for our kiddos. That final question on there. When things go wrong for you, how are you able to stay calm? That one is also critical. Okay, I'm on the last priority. This is it. This is really the last one. So access to a broad course of study. Normally, when we talk about this one, we're talking about giving all students access to high-quality programs, a lot of enriching programs, mainly our esteemed. Remember when we dismantled each school's specialty and kind of provided that to all students at every campus? That's the level of thinking we're usually doing when we're talking about a broad course of study. But for this school year, we had to really rethink giving students access and go back down farther on Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. So we had to rethink providing meal services, things regarding health, COVID testing, mental health outreach. So typically, when we're working up here to make things better for our kids as far as instruction goes and quality of instruction, we had to scale it back and build it back up to make distance learning work for our students. We had to give them the resources in a different way. We had to make sure they had their devices, connectivity. We had to make sure that parents had access to daycare at Anaheim Achieves that was full day. Transporting our foster youth looked different this year. Attendance and engagement outreach looked very different this year. So these are just some things that we had to change our focus toward for this school year. But we didn't drop the ball on some of those instructional pieces. So we're making forward momentum in providing all students access to curriculum through bolstering our understanding of universal design for learning. We also kept our OPAL protocol alive this school year, making sure that our instruction is meeting the culturally and linguistic responsive needs of our emergent bilingual students. And we know moving forward at that top, something that's been very difficult to provide this year given the constraints, is a lot of student talk and rich academic discourse. So we know that that's going to be, we've been talking a lot about that, but our students haven't been getting it this year. So we know hitting the gates, that's something we need to do for next school year. So this is all that I had to present for you. This is our last step in meeting our goal, and this information, this summary, will be provided to the state for our next fall or winter's dashboard release.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Robertson.
Thank you.
Any questions, board members?
I have a question, Ms. Robertson. In regards to the area entitled "The Implementation of State Academic Standards," can you clarify for me? I saw a lot of 5s on there in regards to identifying the professional learning needs. Can you go back and just explain to me more or less how we came up with those numbers, number one?
Yes.
I know you mentioned earlier a survey, but I mean, the survey's given to whom?
Okay, so those are rubrics that are, I'm probably not going to, I'm probably going to go make you all crazy, keep doing this. I think you saw the 5s here? Yes. Identifying the Professional Learning Needs. So our, this is the exact rubric that we share with our stakeholders, and it's been a combination of the CIA Committee and the LCAP Committee for this school year. Yeah, so our input was from those committees this school year.
And in previous years, we have, the administrators that sit on the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Leadership Committee, they then take it back to their schools and get input from the teachers at those schools. So there's like six or seven administrators, so six or seven schools were represented as well. Moving forward, we'll be providing a survey to all teachers regarding various, all of the professional development areas, and we want them to rank their own comfortability. And we'll be meeting with each administrator to set up a plan that's tailored and differentiated to the needs of the school.
Okay, awesome. And then, one more question is, when, I guess, when you are creating this report for us and whatnot, and the survey and everything like that goes out, are we talking about like the teachers and everything like in distance learning? Or are we talking about when they're actually now returned? Can you differentiate that for me?
So this report is supposed to encompass this school year in its finality, but it's, the intention of doing this report is to inform future. So what we're showing you is as we stand right now.
Okay. So combo of both, I mean, I guess, right? Okay.
In previous years, we would present this to you in the fall. This spring, they decided they wanted it to be aligned with the LCAP process as well.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Trustee Alvarez?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. When you were looking at the parental engagement and involvement indicator, you had mentioned one of the items went down, the parent component, supporting families to exercise their legal rights and advocacy, that one?
Yes.
I was wondering if there were specifics about what the parents were talking about with regards to why they thought it should go down? Was there specific programming or opportunities that maybe we didn't support as well as we should have?
I think it was with regard to students with disabilities in particular, and advocating and knowing the rights of their children, students with disabilities. Yeah.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then, I just wanted to point out that when we mentioned that more students were interested in class and excited about going to class, those were indicators that went up. I think it has to do with the idea of teachers being so engaging and connecting with students during distance learning, so I just want to give kudos to our teachers and our staff for being so proactive and making sure that the lessons they were providing to students were fun and connected them interpersonally, not, so they weren't just staring at a computer, right? They were engaging with an actual person. And with regards to that, I saw with my own child, that the teacher did connect very well with this child. So I just wanted to mention kudos to teachers for that indicator going up because I know directly why it happened like that. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Board Clerk Phildeck?
Actually, one of my questions was exactly what he asked about the parental rights. But also through, I've heard a lot through other providers and other partners we're involved with, you know, the social and emotional well-being of students is really relevant and prevalent on everyone's minds, and I keep hearing... And I keep hearing that, keep hearing that. And so, since we're informing, this is to inform us for the future, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you, in what ways are we going to, you know, improve that? Or what ways are we going to support that? And because it's, it's going to be a big job. It's going to be a big job. So, if that doesn't, if that's not too much to catch you off guard, can you tell me a little bit more about what that's going to look like?
I think Superintendent Downing can fill that one.
At our last board meeting, we shared with you some of the feedback that we received and our alignment of our budget, both our LCAP as well as the federal dollars that are coming in, to increases in things like wraparound support through BHAs. We're continuing to fund our counselors and our psychologists. So, that will be a focus of our district. Obviously, the transition back of our students and making sure that we are supporting their differentiated needs.
Okay. And along with that, as we move along, we, will we, how will we, or will we be gauging that progress? You know, how do we make sure that what we're doing is working? You know, what goes along with that to gauge that support, to make sure that it, you know, gets to the optimum level?
I have a response for that.
Okay.
Moving forward next year, we're coupling the Panorama Survey with our BESI data. So, the BESI is a tool that teachers use to document students or rate students internalizing and externalizing behaviors. And the teachers check in on students in that way three, three times a year. And students who are considered to be at risk are notified by the, the B S T team at the site, works with those kiddos, and develops a plan for those kiddos. But what we're doing to kind of strengthen that piece is we're increasing the number of times we do a portion, that emotional regulation portion of the Panorama Survey, to match the timing. So, we're getting what the student says and able to match it to what the teacher is saying to really help fine-tune the support that we provide those kids and also be able to monitor it from a more global level and report back to you guys.
That's perfect. Thank you for that answer.
In addition, with the Panorama Survey, coming up next year, the teachers will have the data down to the student level, where previously, they just had the overall. So, they'll be able to see the responses in real time that their students are giving them.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Robertson. This presentation will be posted on the district website Board of Education page tomorrow, and that takes us to Item 7B. It is recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for the purpose of hearing comments regarding the 2021 to 22 initial contract proposal presented by Anaheim Elementary Education Association to the Anaheim Elementary School District with respect to negotiations for the 2021 to 22 school year. Written comments may be submitted online via form and must have been received by 12:00 PM on Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. On the form menu, you would select Public Hearing Agenda Item. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the Board President or designee. After hearing no comments from the public, we will now adjourn the hearing and vote on the following item. Item 7C. It is recommended the Board of Education officially receive A E E A's 2021 to 22 initial contract proposal. Is there a motion?
So moved. Alvarez.
Second. Relis.
All right. Motion by Alvarez and seconded by Relis. Any discussion? None. We'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item 7D. It is recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for the purpose of hearing comments regarding the 2021 to 22 initial contract proposal presented by Anaheim Elementary School District to the Anaheim Elementary Education Association with respect to negotiations for the 2021 to 22 school year. Written comments may be submitted online via form and must have been received by 12:00 PM on Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. On the form, you would select Public Hearing Agenda Item. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the Board President or designee. After hearing no comments from the public, we will now adjourn the hearing and vote on the following item. Item 7E. It is recommended the Board of Education officially present its 2021 to 22 initial contract proposal to A E E A and direct staff to proceed with the negotiations process. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
Aye, Relis.
I'll second Philbeck.
Seconded by Board Clerk Philbeck. Any discussion? Seeing none. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Takes us to our Item 8, our Consent Calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board in one motion. There's no discussion of these items unless a member of the Board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. As mentioned, Items 8B.15 and 8B.16 were removed at the request of administration prior to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items we pulled at this time? Trustee Relis. Trustee Alvarez. Board Clerk Philbeck. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
See, Trustee Relis. Is there a second?
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by Trustee Alvarez. We'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item 9 is our Action Calendar. 9A, Superintendent's Office, there are no items. 9B, Educational Services. Item 1, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt the 2021 to 22 Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, as presented at the June 9th, 2021, Board Meeting in accordance with Education Code Section 52062, Section B, Clause 2. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
Thank you.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by Trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? Seeing none. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item 9B.2, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the Charter Facilities Agreement between this district and New Century Charter Public Schools, 1646 West Palm Lane, Anaheim, California 92802, to allow the charter school to occupy the Palm Lane school site located at 1646 West Palm Lane, Anaheim, California 92802, effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, subject to the terms of the agreement. The charter school was established pursuant to the Parent Empowerment Act, Education Code Section 53300 and following. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item, Philbeck.
Second. Relis.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item 9C, SELPA. It is recommended the Board of Education approve and authorize the appointments to the Community Advisory Committee for the Anaheim Selpa, Anaheim Elementary SELPA, effective June 24th, 2021 through June 24th, 2022, as listed in Exhibit 9C.1. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
Second Alvarez.
All right. Any discussion? Right. And this is our newly renamed Anaheim Elementary SELPA. All right. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. 9D, Human Resources. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointments of applicants number 06232021-01, numbers 06232021-02, and numbers 06232021-03 to the position of a Vice Principal, effective July 1st, 2021. These individuals will be assigned to a school to be determined. Is there a motion?
So moved. Alvarez.
Second. Relis.
All right. Any discussion? Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Ms. Mellon will proceed to read to us a short introduction.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to Julie McCrory. Julie began employment with A E S D in 1998 and has served as a classroom teacher and currently serves as a teacher on special assignment professional development at Gwin Elementary School. Julie will be the next Vice Principal at Orange Grove School beginning July 1st. Congratulations also to Lynn Maher. Lynn began employment with A E S D in 1991 and has served as a classroom teacher, resource teacher, leadership assistant, and is currently a teacher on special assignment professional development at Juarez School. Lynn will be the next Vice Principal at Roosevelt School, also beginning July 1st. And congratulations to Maria Teresa Nilson. Teresa began employment with A E S D in 1996 and has served as a classroom teacher, resource teacher, and is currently a teacher on special assignment professional development at Franklin School. Teresa will be the next Vice Principal at Edison School, also beginning July 1st. Congratulations to all three of A E S D's newest Vice Principals.
Thank you, and congratulations to all. Item 9D.2, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the Anaheim Elementary School District's initial contract proposal to Anaheim Elementary Education Association with respect to contract negotiations for the 2021 to 22 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
Second Philbeck.
Seconded by Board Clerk Philbeck. Any discussion? Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item 9E, Administrative Services. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt the 2021 to 22 proposed budget as presented at the June 9th, 2021 Board Meeting. Details of the budget were discussed and reviewed at the June 9th, 2021 Board Meeting. Included in this budget adoption is a general fund as well as the child development, deferred maintenance, capital facilities, state school building, special reserve for capital outlay, and self-insurance funds. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relis.
Moved by Relis.
I'll second Philbeck.
Seconded by Board Clerk Philbeck. Any discussion?
Just want to say that it was a very thorough presentation, Jesse, and you and your team. Fantastic job, and thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item 10, Board Discussion. This is Board Member Activities Related to School Business. Trustee Relis.
Pass.
All right.
I really had nothing to do. I was in vacation, so I have nothing to report right now. So, that's my report.
All right. Keep it brief. Okay. Trustee Alvarez.
All right. Thank you. I didn't attend anything, but I just wanted to mention, kudos again to the summer camp program that we're running. I have the privilege of having my kindergarten student attend the program, and he's having a blast there. It was a little scary because it was us sending him to school, but they're, they're playing, they're doing music, they're doing art, just like Dr. Grace mentioned. He comes home talking about the things that he's done. Props to Señorita Villarreal, who that man, doing a great job there. I wanted to give her props because I didn't mention her at the last board meeting for a fantastic school year as well. But yeah, super proud of the programming we have rolled out this summer, all the opportunities we're providing our families to reengage in the classroom if they hadn't had the chance to do so yet. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez. Board Clerk Philbeck.
Only a couple of things, and also to start with saying thank you, Cabinet and staff, everyone, for getting us to the finish line at the end of the year, and also then for rolling us right into a fantastic summer program and preparing us and getting us ready for the new year. So, I hope everybody gets, the new school year, I hope everybody gets to take a, I think we're all kind of trying to take a deep breath right now and recharge, and so, that's great. But my only two events were, I did attend the YMCA Gala, which was about two years in the making because we had to cancel last year. So, we held it over, and it was great because we, we held it at the, the new site for, where the community center, the Ross Park Community Center is going to be. We had it outside and under tents, and it was, you know, it was, it was great, and I think some good money was made for the YMCA. And we're fully going forward now into Phase 2 of the project, which is going to be fantastic, and I'm really excited for that, to be opening up to more community engagement classes and cooking classes and things like that, that the community is going to enjoy. So, we are, with a lot of help, we're, we're getting there, and it's exciting to, took years to get to Phase 1 and then through Phase 1 because I think I've been on that board about five years, and it was started then. So, it, it took a long time to even get off the ground, and now we're rolling. So, thanks to everyone that participated and contributed to that. And the next day, I just want to mention Flag Day. We had sort of a, kind of a minimized Flag Day, you know, in the past, if you've ever been, it's a big production with food and everything at Pearson Park. And last year, everything, of course, was canceled, and we just had a parade processional. Well, this year, we were able to add a little bit more at Pearson Park, and there was just a processional Sean Olly saying with his band, and that was great. And there, there were some families there, and everybody was, you know, careful and masked, and it was, it was just a nice, nice program. And individualized sealed cupcakes instead of, usually, there's a big cake, but this year, there was just boxes and boxes of individual, very safe, sealed cupcakes that everybody had the opportunity to take. And it was, you know, the cars were decorated, people came out, and some of our families. And so, it was a great event to keep going. I think next year, we'll be back in full swing with that, hopefully. And with that, I just hope everybody's enjoying the start to their summer, and thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck. I have just one item to report. I attended our Los Amigos Meeting this morning. I tuned in. The only announcement I wanted to make regarding that is that there, there was a representative from San Ana College who mentioned they are offering vaccinations at the college for the next two weekends, from 4:00 PM to 6:45 PM. No appointment needed. You can just show up Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the next two weekends. So, that is all. Before we adjourn our meeting tonight, I would like to recognize a birthday that's coming up. Our trustee Alvarez, Juan Alvarez, happy birthday. So, we'll let Dr. Downing lead us in song.
All right, everyone, on three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Juan. Happy birthday to you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Our next board meeting will be on July 28th, 2021. I adjourn this meeting at 7:32 PM. Good evening, everyone.
And thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Karen, thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Karen. I'm Karen. We have my girl. We have my girl. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen.